This is the City of Wapaka, third Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
Welcome to our second city council meeting of January. Today is Tuesday, January 17th, 2023, and we'll begin the city council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to be like the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, ever being just for all.
Barb, would you read the open meeting statement for us?
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thanks, and can you take a roll for us, too?
Sure. Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dykstra?
Here.
Lori Chestnut?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Scott Porczatsky?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Dmitri Martin?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
Eight present, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Barb. And Barb, do you want to start the introductions of the department heads?
Sure. Barb Nowak, interim city clerk.
Aaron Johnson, city administrator.
Eric Bailey, library director. Jared Requieu, community and economic development.
Justin Barron, director of Public Works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec director.
Brian Hosele, chief of police.
Thanks. And Stephanie's walking in just as we talk, our finance director. Oh, and Josh is hiding again. Thanks. All right, next up, we have the consent agenda. Barb, it looks like you have one item to add.
Just the city administrators' report was uploaded to the website.
All right. So consent agenda, of course, this is where we take one motion and vote on all of these items unless council would like to see one of these items moved to the regular agenda. If not, we would need an approval of the amended consent agenda.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Chestnut, that we approve the consent agenda with that one amendment. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Regular agenda, again, what you see is what we have here, so we're looking for a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Olson, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Non-agenda items and announcements. We have a presentation of certificate of appreciation to Jacob Waller, who's been with the street department for 15 years. I see Jake's not here, so, Justin, I got a certificate for him for much appreciation. Jake has also taken a new job with the city, right? Is that...is he in that new position?
Yes. I was going to report on my update.
Okay, I won't say anymore then. All right. And then also, we have a presentation of certificate of appreciation to Jane Drager, our community and economic development department. She's been with us for five years. Again, she's not here tonight either, so Jared, you want to make sure she gets that and thank her? All right, next up is public input. This is for non-agenda items. If anybody would like to give, either council staff or somebody in the audience that would like to give us public input on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your time at the podium to three minutes or less.
Forgot my stool to stand on, so I'll pretend I'm tall. Christine Burnett, 218 High Street, Wapaka, and my husband here, Nick Seidel, we reside 218 High Street. We are both members of the executive committee of the Wapaka County Republican Party, and at our last meeting, we were made aware of the Agape Center plans for the nursing home out on the Mill Pond, that they had purchased it, and there were apparently some difficulties with permitting, and that they...we were informed at the meeting that they didn't feel like they were getting a lot of support from the city, and maybe even getting some resistance from the city on the project. And I don't have any intimate deals...details about that, but I did want to share my own personal feelings about it. As a taxpayer, I pay approximately $5,000 a year in property taxes and have lived here for six years, almost seven years. So I do have a significant investment in the community, and I love Wapaka. What you all have done downtown is absolutely amazing. It's fabulous. It's beautiful, with the exception of the Las Vegas light poles. I'm not a big fan of those, but I think the rest of it is just absolutely beautiful. The strength of a community involves a lot of things: physical environment, financial strength, and spiritual strength. You all have apparently done a very job with the...a very good job with the physical environment. It is attractive. It has just received a wonderful facelift. It's very, very inviting. Financially, I think fiscally, you all do a very good job. I really do. I think you've applied for grants to take care of a lot of the things: the splash park, the parks in general, attracting younger families to the area, which creates a very nice financial base, you know, for all of us. I think that's very important. I'd like to focus a little spiritual spirituality. You know, the city does have responsibility to support charitable projects. Agape has a strong volunteer base. They have a very good plan for a domestic violence shelter in that building, from what I understand, and I think that is a very...it's a project that should be supported. I know the building is a challenge. Apparently, it's permits problems because of the building, and I think that I am urging the city to be supportive, to try and figure out ways not to obstruct, but to ensure that the project goes forward in a responsible manner. It builds a healthy community to have a place where challenged citizens who are in dangerous situations can go for compassion, for shelter. The food bank is great. There's a lot of volunteers there. It's really a nice thing, and it's obvious to that. So I think that it would be a really good addition to the food bank and to the other compassionate things that happen in Wapaka as a community. There has to be balance, and this would be a really great project for balance, volunteerism, and compassion in the community. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Christine, before you move away from there, Jared, just raise your hand once. This is Jared Requieu. Christina, if you wanted to get more information on...about what's going on with Agape, give Jared a call, and he'll be able to explain to you exactly the process that we're going through and the issues that we have. I think you'll find that the city has been working with them as much as we possibly can, but it's not as easy as you think it is.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure it's not. Maybe Jared could come to one of our executive committee meetings with the party. That would be great. So I will get with you, Jared. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else that has any public input for the city? Any other public input? All right, let's go ahead and move into...did you want to speak, too, sir? I'm sorry. All right. Okay. All right. Sounds good. Thank you. Next up, we have community reports and department ed reports, and we have Liz Kinnear here, who's representing the library, so...and the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network. Liz?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. It's always a pleasure to come to the council meetings for our annual input from the library. January seems to be the month that we get to come in, or I get to come and visit you guys, so it's nice to be here. The Wapaka Area Public Library is a proud member of the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network. That is a result of the Wapaka Cultural Plan that was initiated in 2018. I didn't do a good job of introducing myself either. I'm Liz Kinnear. I'm the exhibit room coordinator at the library. There we go. The city is a great partner and supporter of these events that promote arts and culture in Wapaka. The library is always excited to collaborate on these events that allow us to provide inclusive and accessible programs to our patrons and fulfill core missions in our strategic plan. Looking back at 2002, we participated in many events with WACAN partners to provide high-quality and meaningful experiences to our community. A few of the highlights, of course, the Yuletide Trail, one of the most recent ones. This is a big one for WACAN organizations, and our staff attended planning meetings for the event. The library was a stop on the Cookie Trail. Our teen volunteer agents distributed Smores kits. The children's department hosted an interactive movie and storytime, and the adults department provided a folk singer performance. For Halloween on Main Street, the library helped us set up and then also hosted Pete the Cat, if anybody saw him out there, a popular children's book character. Arts on the Square is another wonderful event that we're proud to be part of. Our library staff worked with the Wapaka Arts Board on the obelisk display kits and hosted the Arts Hub exhibit and recital in our exhibit room. Root of Jazz was last April. We worked with Winchester Academy and provided programs and an exhibit, including a movie with Jack Rhodes with his lecture. Potato Day was a fun day out at South Park. We partnered with the Historical Society on this. Poetry Month is another successful event. The library invited community members to add to our poetry, if you saw that in the lobby, and purchased several newly published books written by local and Wisconsin poets for our collection. And Monopoly Day this past summer, we worked with area businesses and WACAN members. The library hosted a life-size monopoly game on the city hall library lawn and had 185 participants in just that day alone. Looking to 2023, we are excited to continue these important collaborations and generate new ways to engage our community in arts and cultural programs. The city's support is instrumental in our success. We especially appreciate the city's efforts to market our programs, whether on social media, radio, or TV. In 2022, the library had over 14,000 visitors to exhibits, just the exhibit room alone, and almost 14,000 attended our virtual and in-person programs, and it was 10,316, if you're looking at just in-person programming. These activities are all free and open to anyone in our community. We are known as a resource for cultural programming, which adds to the vibrancy of our city. Thank you very much, Mayor Smith, and to the council members for the opportunity to give an update on the library's continued involvement with WACAN. We're looking forward to another fantastic year of collaborative events and programs that enrich and enlighten Wapaka. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Liz. Anybody have any questions for Liz? Comments before she steps down here?
Nice job, Liz.
Thanks, Lori. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thanks, Mayor Smith.
You also. Thanks. Let's go right into department ed reports, then. Eric, looks like you're number one here.
All right, I'll kick us off, then. And I immediately lost the tab that I was on. Good job, Eric.
That's a new one.
Okay. Well, there we go. Or not. Okay. Well, I'm excited to report that we were able to get the cabinets and closets that we had budgeted to install in the meeting room installed before the end of the fiscal year. Many thanks to Tim Garkey at Chan Cabinetry, who we worked with, to beat some of the deadlines as far as...and challenges as far as getting materials in in time over the fall. I'm excited to report that we received a pretty good-sized donation, $47,000, this past fall, from the Vergawen family, and that will be going to renovation of the exhibit room at the library. So that's very exciting. Most of the installations in there are either original to that space, or they are things that are castoffs from other places in the library or other places in the community. So I'm excited to have some new furniture in there and to be able to get the display cases, both the ones on wheels as well as the ones that are installed on the wall in the back, updated. The ones on the wheels in particular, we're really excited about. Those don't lock, and they're also about a billion pounds. They're very difficult to move. So both of those features at present mean that you rarely see any of those out and around the library, but getting some special-built display boxes will, you know, allow us to be a lot more flexible as far as where we use those, which is going to be great. So we have Jack Rhodes Day that is coming up here at the library on February the 2nd, and for that, we are going to be showing five of Jack's favorite movies throughout the day, so that's going to be a running full-day program. Also during the day, in our upstairs conference room, we're going to have a roll of Jack's greatest hits from his commentary, the ones that we've got on file and recorded, which, thanks to the pandemic, is actually a pretty good selection. And those will be running on a loop in the conference room upstairs. We'll also have a display out with some information about Jack for those that want to know to...want to get to know him a bit better, and everything that he did for the library, as well as for the community of Wapaka. So again, that's February the 2nd. And so that Sue is not going to get on top of me too much here. I should also mention that the Snow Full Moon event is coming up. That's going to be...is that actually...is that Shambow Park? Is that what it's called?
Yes, and Shambow Hill, and the Train Depot. All of those.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll probably leave the details on that to Laura, since she's been more involved in the planning than I have, but it's going to be a great event, and it's a partnership between Historical Society, the library, and the Park District that we've got coming up here in February. And... I don't know how I manage this, to be honest. We do hope to have the programming and outreach coordinator position filled within the next day or two. That's fantastic. That's been vacant since August. Our new website is now live. If you notice anything weird, missing, or misleading on it, in having to take a look at that, please do let staff members Patsy Servie and Molly Ranki know about that so that we can get it fixed. There's always a bit of polishing that goes into this. And on that note, I will end with reporting that our Little Free Pantry is now open and stocked with a variety of foods that were made possible thanks to donations from some local groups, including Trinity Lutheran. The little refrigerator that we've got in there is another donation courtesy of Hanson's Appliance. So, thank you. That's my report.
Thanks, Eric. Anybody have any questions or comments for Eric? Thank you. Let's go to economic development. Jared?
Thank you, Mayor. My report can be found on page 16 of your packets. Two items that are not in the report. We recently went through a couple of processes for U-Haul on the old Kmart site. It is my understanding that as of last Friday, they did close on the property, so starting probably in the next couple of weeks, we may see a little more activity on that parcel, but that is what is going on. Another item, which is the lovely time of year that we continually get snow, our building inspector slash code compliance, street department, and a variety of other individuals involved are currently working on the snow shoveling or have been working on the snow shoveling. So the process that, if your shovel...or if your sidewalks are not shoveled, our code compliance officer will go out, note properties. That list will be provided to the street department, and the street department will go clear those sidewalks, and we will bill the property owners. So we did recently go out and do a slew of properties. Those bills have gone out. I believe today, we did receive five calls, just questioning why they got the bill. We do have pictures of every property that was done. The street department takes a before and an after photo to show the results. So if you guys do ever get complaints or calls on that, feel free to direct them to my department. We will field those, take a look at the photos, make sure everything's correct. We can show the photos to those residents, et cetera. So happy to take care of those and make sure those are all sorted out and correct. So just want to point it out, as we did get five today, and you may hear about it or get some in the upcoming days or weeks. So, and with more snow in the forecast, it's also a good thing to mention, as we may be out again, probably on Monday, doing the same thing. So good to give neighbors reminders to ensure they're shoveling, et cetera, but feel free to field any calls to us, and we will take care of them. Our newest permitting software seems to be going very well. We're able to help any residents that come in. We're able to help residents over the phone, over email. A lot of residents do appear to be getting the grasp of it fairly easily, and any ones that are having hiccups, we, of course, take care of and help them out as much as we can. So for the most part, I feel that program is going very smoothly. We're continuing to work with our downtown partnership group, and those are looking at items like Main Street flowers, Main Street events, more that we can do, how we can continue to improve our Main Street, et cetera, hoping to progress this group into more of a self-sustaining and operating group that staff...city staff would be more of a part of and less leading, more led by the business owners. So more initiative to be taken. We hope we can get it to that point, but right now, it's just in the early stages. Economic diversity and resilience strategy report. We do hope to have another stakeholder meeting for this in February, and then we would look to have a final public meeting to present the final strategies and reports, maybe in March. That is yet to be determined. The final item would be code enforcement, with our building inspector now being pretty fluent in our processes for buildings inspections specifically and building permits. He has kind of dipped his toes more into code enforcement, so we've picked up some old cases. We've tried to retouch those and get those taken care of, and then any new ones that come in, we're trying to field a little more efficiently than we have been. So exciting to get that up and going again and getting some old cases taken care of.
Great. Thanks, Jared. Comments, questions? Jared? All right, let's go to Stephanie, finance.
Okay. My packet report is on page four, and a lot shorter than the last two, but basically, we are hitting our end-of-year tax roll process with all of our reporting, payroll reporting, end-of-year reporting in general. Our audit team was here last week, and we did get to sit down and go through a lot of stuff with them, just preparing for the yearly audit. Basically, as far as finance, that's what we're...that's what we're basically doing the rest of this month and probably into February and March. So some fun things that we have going on in our department. We did start a wellness committee with the rest of a few other departments. We try to have everybody or somebody from each department involved. We've been meeting monthly. We did meet before the last holiday party, and we did just meet recently again. Leslie from the Park and Rec Department has been doing a really great job of doing some wellness initiatives and some wellness challenges with our Go 360. I think it's Go 365, Go 360. I don't even honestly remember what it's called, but yeah, so we've been...we've been doing a lot with that, and it's been pretty fun. It's a fun way to bring some excitement and collaborate with other departments, so that's all I have.
Thanks, Steph. Any questions, comments for Stephanie? All right, let's go over to Public Works here. Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. My update can be seen on page 18 and 19 and 20 of the packet. Starting the usual in the wastewater department, our facility management plan, which was approved just a council meeting ago, is getting started. We're compiling data right now, so Jesse Landry is actually on vacation, and so Cody Banks has been stepping up to get all that data together, send over the consultant, and I'll definitely be making many more of these updates for you to keep you up to date on this project as we move forward. Street department, Jared did mention the sidewalk snow removal enforcement, so that's been something that we've been collaborating on for a number of years. We did put out plenty of notification, and of course, as Jared has mentioned, if you do get complaints, send them his way. Just kidding, I'm also available. Our landfill located just off of Highway 49, I did have a meeting visit with Wisconsin DNR representative about a month or so ago. We have a number of items we need to fix out there. Nothing extremely major. It's mostly just maintenance items. We have trees and shrubs that are growing within the cap of the well...or well, the landfill. We need to clean those up. We need to improve our signage and our gate that's out there, so we'll be working on that as part of our work items for this spring into this summer. Waterside, the water operators have been extremely busy changing out meters and updating all of our meters to a cellular read, and that is finally complete. So what customers can do is, we have what's called an Eye on Water, which is a customer portal. You can log in, sign up, and then you can review your own water usage almost in real time. It's pretty easy to find. If you just go to internet search and just type in Eye on Water of Wapaka, it'll...first thing that should pop up is a link to our website where you can click on and then sign up. There is help to get it. You do need to know your billing or postal code along with your account number, so it would be helpful when you sign up to have a bill ready for signing up for this. We're really looking forward to having this thing ready for us and for all of our customers. You can see what your water usage is. We're hoping that it cuts down on complaints and questions, but then also allow people to track where their water usage, and then we can...everyone, we can better manage it into the future. We're very fortunate to live in the area that we are with. We have such abundant supply of fresh and clean drinking water, so it's good to conserve it and protect it while we have it now, you know, to maintain into the future, to help our development and also our health. So many benefits for that, so I encourage everybody to check that out. Facilities, Russ Montgomery did retire in mid-December. His position was vacant or is vacant still. We did advertise for it internally and interviewed several members, and we offered the position to Jake Waller, which is our mechanic, and who did accept the position. So we're in a little bit of a transitional period right now. We're having Jake kind of fill in a couple of different roles, where he is helping out on the facility side, still doing his mechanic duties, and the next step is now we need to try to find a new mechanic. So that is the next step. And so Jake and I have been working on a lot of things together. He's been working very well with the other departments. We talked today, and we went over about 50 things, and I failed to mention to him his recognition tonight, so... So, the egg's on my face, Mayor. Very exciting news for our new facility. As you've all been made aware, I mean, we are breaking ground on it this year. Recently being updated, the schedule has been accelerated. We are looking to break ground starting in May. So, last time I reported, it was not sure if we were even going to get started by the summer. And that just is an improvement on supply chain and work with Myron and them being diligent on getting this thing started for us. Other good news, we did get awarded a Focus on Energy rebate of just under $12,000. So, we were awarded it. So, the next thing is just ensuring that the building is built according to what we reported of Focus on Energy. And then they have to do a final inspection and then we get that money at the end. There is an updated rendering on the, I guess, on the next page, page twenty. You've seen something fairly similar. It's a little updated based on some of the colors that we've been picking out, the exterior masonry, a little bit increased rendering or I guess, what is that? I'm not an IT guy, but better shading with some of the plants. So, it's just something that was recently created and hopefully get everybody excited for it. So, and I'm, there's one thing I will not talk about, I'll let Laura talk about next.
All right. Thanks, Justin. Any questions, comments for Justin? All right, let's go to Parks and Rec. Oh, I'm sorry, Colin, go ahead.
This Eye On Water that you guys have installed throughout the city, I know from a couple of experiences of residents in my area that they've found that has been very useful for them. And in the case of some sort of a water emergency in a house where something becomes a leak or whatnot, it's my understanding the city can inform residents of water problems in their house. And I think that's a huge benefit to our citizens. So, I think, good job. I wanted to say some more about that because it's a, it's a neat thing.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, Colin, absolutely. So, we did have at least one case that I know of where somebody left to go down to Florida or their vacation home and they were gone for a few days. And it was a red flag that came up through the system of a high usage. And there was a leak inside the home that was causing damage. And the water operators were able to shut that off while those people were out of town. So, in the past, it would not have been caught within a month. Now, we can catch it like within minutes sometimes.
Nice. Good way to conserve water too, yeah. Thanks. Anybody else? All right, let's go to Laura at Parks and Rec.
All right, thank you. And my report is on page twenty-one. We had an eco park planning meeting for any stakeholders or community members that were interested. And we had about eighteen people there and that was after we had to cancel due to inclement weather the week before. So, it was a really good turnout. And overwhelmingly, the people who were there really want to see it stay an environmentally, educationally focused park. And so, we're gonna try to put some information out there about things such as bees and, you know, waters, solar panels, anything that's eco-friendly. Just have information out there for that. And, and it was a really, really great meeting with a lot of wonderful ideas. So, hopefully in a few years, we can start putting that kind of information and really start planning for that, getting grants to raise funds, to keep adding to that park and making it the way that the stakeholders want it. Lakewood Field, I'm gonna skip and talk about when we get to that memo in a little bit. We started our virtual ice fishing tournament for kids under eighteen years old. And what that is, is they just have to ice fish anywhere in the state and take pictures of their fish next to a ruler and send them in. And then the kids that win the largest fish, they get a prize from us. We are going to start our medallion hunt on February sixth, which is a Monday. So, watch for clues for that. It's gonna be somewhere in one of our, in one of our parks. And this is what Justin was gonna reference. We received a $5,000 ATC grant to plant trees at Swan Park. And so, in collaboration with Justin and Russ and Aaron Helped, we are fortunate to have received that grant and we're gonna plant a very large variety of trees out in Swan Park due to that. I wrote this in December when we had lots and lots of snow. So, I had good news on here that our sledding hill was open. It's not right now, but hopefully after Friday, it will be opened again. So, it's just fluxes back and forth depending on how much snow we have on the ground. And we do have a free little library out there for sleds. And thanks to Fleet Farm for donating about fifteen sleds. So, we don't have all fifteen out, but we'll rotate them in if things get broken or lost. And we have, as Eric stated, been collaborating a lot with the library on a number of events. And the first one we're gonna have is this, this hike, full moon hike. And the full moon is called the Snow Full Moon. And that will be February fifth, which is a Sunday from three to five P.M. Family friendly, there's gonna be hot beverages at the train depot. So, come on down. We'll have short loops, long loops, alternative loops where you can walk up on Chambow Hill. So, if you really want to get a good workout, we'll provide that for you. And we are preparing for winter rec fest. We are hopefully gonna have this whether or not there's lots of snow on the ground. We are creating contingency plans and still providing entertainment and fun regardless of if you can go sledding or not. We have asked all of the local restaurants if they would like to participate in a chili cook-off and we have eleven confirmations so far and we're waiting on seven more. So, that's really, really exciting. And that will be on February eleventh from three to seven P.M. At Swan, or at, yes, Swan Park over by the sledding hill.
Thanks, Laura. Any questions, comments for Laura? All right, let's go to the police department.
Thank you, Mayor. My, my report can be found on page twenty-two. Our staff is working at the, on the end of year annual report. So, we're hoping to have that done here in the next month and be able to present that early this spring. The other thing that you may have heard over the weekend is that we did have a hit and run in the downtown area. And I want the council to know that because of the cameras that we have in the downtown area, we were actually able to solve that relatively quickly, get ahold of the person and talk with him as to what happened and actually really see what happened. It wasn't as, as bad as it sounded, but there, there was a hit and run that did occur. And as I said, if it wouldn't have been for the cameras, we may not have been able to solve that. So, it was nice to have those and be able to reference those right away. The last, last fall, we did have a promotional process. John Helgerson had retired in December and Paul Benchwell was promoted to captain and Dan Wazir was promoted to patrol sergeant's position. So, those positions were effective January first. And we started our, Fox Valley Tech started a new recruit school. And Garrett Colvert, who we're sponsoring, is part of that. And we're hopeful he's very successful with that. So, he would be graduating in May and then coming on board with us beginning in June. So, it's a new adventure for, for their family, some changes with school and everything. And then we also have our squad car that will be coming in. Hopefully by the end of March or looking at getting our new equipment for that and then being able to utilize some of the equipment from the older squad since we've been able to update the cars for the last three to four years. We're now able to start to use some of the newer radios that we had purchased back then in the cars that, that should help us reduce some of our capital. And then next month, just so everybody knows that we will not have a commission meeting. And it's just because in February, it's always the chief's conference and both Captain Benchwell and I will be attending that. So, we will not have a report for next month. And then the last thing I have is Thursday, we're expecting that snow. And the last couple of times that we've had snow or ice, we've had a lot of accidents. So, we're just asking everybody just to leave five minutes early and just reduce their speeds to prevent some of the accidents that we've had. That's all that I have.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions, comments for the chief? All right, let's go to IT and WaPaca Online and everything else that Josh does here.
On the IT side of things, I've been working on just some network maintenance, updating all of our network equipment. We've got dozens of devices. They run operating systems just like your computers do and they all need to get updated. So, getting through all that. Community media side of things, we've got all the content that we do. We've added another platform. We've got into utilizing a podcast platform starting this year. We're not making new content for that, but we're taking our existing content and getting it to another spot to hopefully reach more people. And we're calling it the Chain to Main Podcast. So, a lot of the audio content we do will be added there and works really slick, really easy. It gets out onto all the main podcasting apps. So, if you're into that stuff, should be pretty easy to find. And then on the WaPaca Online side of things, we've, we're awarded a grant last fall from the Public Service Commission. And we are getting to the point, Ralph and I are getting to the point to order the equipment for that. We're upgrading four back halls to some licensed equipment. It gives us about quadruple the capacity to get internet bandwidth from point A to point B. We did, one link is a test as part of the tower project and it worked out really well. So, we put in a grant app. It's about a $32,000 project with us covering just over 50% of it. So, we're working on getting everything ordered this week and get our tower climber in here in the spring. It should be pretty cut and dry to get that one done. And then I'm working on another app. We're reapplying, we need a taller tower here to accommodate some of our stuff. We were almost awarded that last cycle. It fell off. It was recommended, but fell off. So, we're, Greg and I are working on the grant app to reapply and see if we have better luck this time or not. That's what I've got going on.
All right. Thanks, Josh. Comments, questions? Thank you. Let's go to our newest department head, Barb.
Thank you, Mayor. There is going to be a February election on the twenty-first. I just found that out last week with the one contest on the ballot being the Supreme Court, the Justice of Supreme Court. So, I'll be getting those absentees out by January thirty-first. We have about just over 200 filed to be sent out by that time. And then working on getting together with the nursing homes to have our chiefs go there to help them absentee vote. Aaron and I have been meeting Monday mornings to go over different things that have come up, publications and different things that need to be done. Sandy left really good notes on a lot of things, but some things come up that aren't on the notes that I don't know about. So, Aaron's been really helpful with that. I've been working with Stephanie, Kate and Shelley in the finance department on doing some of the invoicing and the monthly newsletter that goes out in the utility bill, some GL entries and just some day-to-day things that I was doing in the finance department. And they agreed to take those back over to the finance and help out there. Working with different departments to type up meetings. Tamra's doing it for the Park and Rec and Jerry's been doing it for Police and Fire. Jared's been helping with the city plan. So, that's very helpful and just trying to figure things out. That's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Barb. Questions, comments for Barb? All right, Aaron, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Council members, as mentioned prior, my report was uploaded to the packet. While we're thinking about it, Barb, I know it hasn't been very long. Barb's been doing a fantastic job in her role as interim clerk and I know will continue to. So, we're lucky to have someone like that step into that place in this situation. On the report, I just mentioned, I've been having conversations with the WaPaca Rotary Club about a clock that they're willing to donate. This isn't just any clock. It's a pretty nice clock. It's a decorative, meant to be an aesthetic piece, also a promotional piece for Rotary and the work that they do in the community. Actually, the clock is, I believe, over $30,000. I, I think there's a, if you looked, if you haven't looked at my packet or my report, there is a picture of it, of what that may look like and, and working with Justin and his crews on kind of how we can assist with that. That'll likely come as a formal action item to, to, right now, they're looking at placing it somewhere on City Hall front lawn is their preference, but we need council approval for that. So, expect to hear more about that. We are starting a leadership series. We're gonna run that leadership series monthly throughout the year and that starts tomorrow morning, actually, at 10:00 A.M. We have twenty-three staff signed up, which is awesome. I give them a lot of credit for taking the initiative to want to be a part of conversations that don't naturally pop up typically. Though the staff that we've kind of invited or encouraged to come are either people that are in leadership positions or people aspiring to be in leadership positions within our organization. And you'll see in my report, some of the, some of the topics we look to have conversations around. It's really cool too, I have to mention that our speakers, our people within the community that hold leadership positions, well-respected, and they're agreeing to do it for nothing. We'll probably get them some thank you things, but they're putting together ninety-minute presentations free of charge. So, that's awesome. Let's see. There are some changes that we've recently learned about with the WaPaca Farm Market. I sit on a committee that discusses farm market ongoings. And if you remember, the farm market is a three-legged partnership. And that's the City of WaPaca, UW Extension and Living the WaPaca Way. Living the WaPaca Way has voted to not no longer be the fiscal sponsor. They've run everything through their, actually through the WaPaca County Natural Resources Foundation, which is what the Living the WaPaca Way does fall under. So, right now, there's a lot of questions and a lot of uncertainty around how that's gonna work for this next year. Actually, we did have staff met, Stephanie met with the treasurer today of Living the WaPaca Way just to understand exactly what all went into that. At the same time, the farm market coordinator is looking into, I think it's a great opportunity for the farm market to create their own bylaws, maybe start their own nonprofit and really be a standalone organization. So, we'll continue working through conversations and update you, but there are some unknowns there. The employee rewards program, I just want to give staff a ton of credit, specific, well, all staff. But it was a lot of work for supervisors who did, had a lot more administrative work. They did a great job administering the program as it was outlined and documenting along the way, working with staff. And there's a ton of fantastic things that happened from it. Honestly, one of the things was, and we didn't want it to come into play so soon, but one of the things was like Sandy created thirty how-to documents. Didn't understand the urgency of that, but it came in handy when she retired. And, and there's countless other, other things. But right now, that was the first year of the program. So, department heads and myself and Mayor Smith have been involved in conversations over the last three department head meetings about how did it go? What are some things that maybe can be tweaked? What are the things that didn't go exactly smooth? So, I sent out some revised, potentially amended parts of that policy that you guys may see in the future based off those conversations. Not huge changes, but just trying to improve it as always. So, Stephanie mentioned the 2022 audit and how they were in town last week. So, we're looking forward to working, continuing to work with them throughout the next couple of months. Absolutely plan to have that by April and have that reported out to council at that point. Meeting with Representative Peterson and Senator Ballwig, Mayor Smith and I had an opportunity to meet with them. Really, we wanted to just talk about what everyone's talking about and the shared revenue. Just remind them that that, that is a priority for us. It does matter to us when they do go to those meetings and have those conversations and vote on those items that hopefully some of the things that we talked about, they remember and they can, they can call back on. Also talked about different types of, if, you know, if something didn't happen with shared revenue, different types of opportunities that we may have and ask questions around that. Premier area resort tax and other things and just, those are the conversations that we're kind of forced to have if something doesn't happen with shared revenue. But I will say that it's encouraging and there's a long way to go. There are proposals right now in the legislature that would provide more shared revenue to all municipalities. It's a long ways away from happening, but, but those things have been brought forward maybe even sooner than I would have expected. So, that's, that's exciting. Met with Matt Clatt in the Bureau of Aeronautics. Clatt in the Bureau of Aeronautics, which is awesome. They, one of our main financial reps at Madison, put together this call and had nine BOA people online. So anything we wanted answered could be answered, and it's kind of an annual workshop series that they're doing. And we just talked about the Wapakka Airport, looked at our entitlement funding, talked about what we should be prioritizing. As we talked about all the conversations happening around the airport, where we started, it wasn't where we finished. And we did start having conversations around a master planning effort at the airport that would take potentially two years. It's something that the BOA pushes and has been pushing for. But it's expensive, and they are now, most of it can be covered by entitlement funds, but there's an opportunity cost there, right? So if you're using your entitlement funds for that, what are you not using it for at the airport? The head financial guy at the BOA did say he was going to look into alternative things to maybe where we could do kind of both 1A and 1B priorities at the airport. So you guys will be hearing more on that. Also want to give, just kind of mentioned, there's been meetings going on for the last three, four, this is not my report either, but three, four months between myself, Laura, library staff, and it's on diversity and inclusion and how do we serve, you know, our demographics are changing a little bit. We're seeing more people that are speaking other languages, and how do we serve everybody? So those conversations have been happening, not only from a language standpoint, but providing programs and how do we communicate, how do we reach them? So that, I want to thank all of them for being involved in that, and the Police Department as well, as they're also involved in those conversations. So that's all I have, Mayor and Council. Any questions?
Thanks, Aaron. Any questions? Go ahead, Colin.
I noticed, it's kind of a thought more than a question. I noticed in the clerk's report that all of us have signed up to be alderpersons again, and we've got a new guy coming, hopefully will get elected or whatever. But my point of the story is to say that when I came on board, you had organized a great introduction through all the department heads, many of whom aren't here anymore. It's sort of interesting. So the people who are here might not realize that that happened.
Did it say something about you, Colin?
Well, it's more about Aaron and organizing it. It was a great way to get me on board, and I wanted to make sure that if you hadn't been thinking about it, or the department heads hadn't, that it was worthwhile for me. So I hope you can do it for the next guy.
Yeah, thanks, Colin. We absolutely will. And being that you are the one that is freshest off that process, if you have things now that you've been here for a period of time that you think would have been good to cover that we didn't, I'm all ears.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right, let's move into unfinished business. This is ordinance number 24-2022, an amendment to Chapter 17.104 for permitted uses and conditional uses. And this is the second reading. So Jared, you want to just remind us again what this amendment is, and if you had any comments from the public?
Yeah, of course. So first off, there was no comments from the public. Did not receive any emails or phone calls or anything about it since the last meeting. This item does start on page 46 of your packets. It is looking at the permitted uses and conditional land use list, and ultimately, the prohibited land use list. It is looking at some changes in the residential uses, commercial uses, industrial uses, and accessory uses. A lot of these changes are, I guess I'll classify as cleanup. We've been eliminating some of the conditional use permits that just, it may not be really beneficial to have them as there isn't a reason to have them be a conditional use, rather, they should be permitted or just not in that district. Along with that, ensuring that a variety of the land uses are in the correct district. There isn't something in like the central business district that really belongs in more of a heavier commercial district, et cetera. Or, you know, in extreme case, there isn't something industrial in the neighborhood business district, you know, kind of deal. So just making sure the land uses are in the right district, combining similar uses. So for an example, we had a land use called Crockery Store, which in today's day and age, Walmart sells crockery, Target sells crockery, every store sells crockery. So we don't truly have a crockery store, and if we did, we just classify it as retail anyways. So just cleaning that up, eliminating the unnecessary ones. And then I will say there are a few progressive changes that we've kind of looked at, you know, in terms of housing needs, how can we kind of help diversify that? Are there different businesses that, you know, might semi belong in maybe heavy commercial? You know, we made those a conditional use, whereas maybe they're, they're more typically been in a light, or a light industrial district. So there's just been some very small progressive changes that we're going to try out and add in and see how they go. And of course, they can monitor, and we can always change them back at any time. So.
All right. Any comments on this? Anybody I'd like to make a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Martin, that we approve ordinance number 24-2022. Any further discussion? Barbara Calderol?
Dmitri Martin?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thanks, Barb. Jared, thanks. You're up again, though, under new business. We have a certified survey map that we need to talk about.
Of course. This one starts on page 61 of your packets. This was viewed, reviewed by Plan Commission and recommended for approval to the council. This pertains to a past discussion that we had on a possible land purchase out in the industrial park or River North area, industrial park area. There is a new owner that recently purchased the building that had fastenal and pausing clause in it, and that business is actually Wapakka Rental Center. So they did purchase the building. They are looking towards expanding, adding some, an additional building to kind of house some of their equipment and act as an extension of the rental center. So with that, they of course need more land. The certified survey map is being brought forward to adjust the property lines and allow them to purchase that land from us. We are currently in the process of signing the agreement, the land purchase agreement, which actually came before council, I believe, at the last meeting. But once we get that signed, we'll get that kind of closing, the closing process completed, and then we can record the CSM, and that's kind of how we finalize the process. So steps are all in motion. This is just the next one we need for approval.
All right. Thanks, Jared. Any questions for Jared? Again, we'd be looking for a motion to approve this.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Peterson, that we certify, we approve the certified survey map for A&amp;N Wapakka LLC, address 701 South Industrial Drive. Discussion? Barbara Calderol?
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dmitri Martin?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right. Jared, I think you're done for a while here. All right. Next up, we have discussion on the Lakeman Field Master Plan effort. Laura?
Yes, thank you. If you would see on page 64, when we started planning for the Lakeman Field project, we ultimately just needed lights and a new infield. And with that, though, we wanted to make sure we were doing it correctly, so we wanted to do a master plan. That master plan showed us that the property lines are actually not ideal for what we want to do and what we think needs to belong on the, on the actual Lakeman Field. In addition to that, what we found was the zoning is also not what it should be zoned as. And so let's, yeah, let's go down to page 65 for a second. When you look at the red outline, that is where it is currently zoned. And in order to put the lights in appropriately, we want to also retain those pine trees that are out in the outfield. That's a really good green screen for our batters, and we would like to utilize on the bottom right there, those tennis courts and basketball court, so that we can utilize that for parking if necessary in the future. So we, I had a long conversation with Jared and with Justin, and Justin is in agreement that he's okay with moving the property line. This is all city-owned property, by the way. So if you then go back up to 65, you can see on the plan for the Public Works Building on the, on the west side there, it is outlined where we don't want the property line. So we do need to have a certified survey map done. We need to re-line the properties. And after that happens, then we can rezone. And so it would go from public facility and utility lands district to a resource conservation district. And then we can use the Parks and Rec land use designation thereafter, so that it's, it's definitely zoned in the right place. As you may or may not be aware, we really wanted to start fundraising in December of 2022. But due to these hiccups, we've had to put our fundraising on hold because we can't fundraise until we know what our master plan looks like, and we can't create a master plan until the zoning and the property lines are correct. So our recommendation is to preliminary approve the rezoning of Lakeman Fields, that we can proceed with developing the master plan and our fundraising efforts. One of the things I didn't put on here is the way that it's currently zoned, we actually have a 25-foot setback from the roads, which means that we would only be able to utilize our current footprints of the buildings, which would mean that instead of developing just a really large concession slash bathroom and have it be one building, if we don't get that setback switched, we'd have to utilize two buildings, and the cost would be more. So this is actually going to save us money if we can just expand the current concession stand within our master plan.
All right. Thanks, Laura. So really, what we're looking for here is, is council's blessing to move forward with the rezoning of this property. And let's, let's do it in the form of a motion here, too, just to, if you're okay with that. So we'd be looking for a motion to just allow them to move forward with the rezoning process. Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion by Pritchatsky, second by Olson, that we allow them to move forward with the rezoning of Lakeman Field. Discussion?
I just want to make a comment, too. So if anybody is, has, I guess, read through the zoning code, they may realize that the resource conservation district isn't the most ideal district. But I guess the reason for that is we don't necessarily have a designated parks district, which makes it really difficult to develop in parks. So for an example, one of our parks is in agricultural, another is in public land use. Just, they're kind of scattered throughout because we don't have a specific parks district. So as part of this process, we would be looking at kind of amending that resource conservation district to be more of a resource conservation and parks district, just to make it a little more friendly to the city, to ensure that we can create the parks that our residents, you know, deserve and make our community great.
Okay. Thanks, Jared. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Just a voice vote here. Go ahead, Colin.
This is just saying that we're open to the idea of rezoning it. This isn't subverting...
They're going to move forward with the rezoning of it.
But what I'm, what I'm getting is it's not subverting any sort of public hearing that any neighbor or anything might, might want to object to.
Jared, you want to respond to that?
That would be correct, Colin. This is just kind of telling us that, yes, you, you should proceed. We're in favor of hearing you, you know, in this process. It sounds like something we would want to entertain kind of deal and hear more about.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Again, just a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, say no. Motion carried. Laura, thanks. I guess you're going to Swan Park here, too.
I am. Thank you. So on page 67, we're going to talk about the proposed idea of renting out the Swan Park shelters. So as you know, we currently have five shelters that we rent out in the summertime, only one of which has a kitchen associated with it, and that is the Upper South Park, and that is our most highly coveted rental because of that reason. Now, with the addition of the splash pad at Swan Park, we're expecting an uptick of people using the shelters that currently exist out there. And if you look down at the picture, I know it's, it's rather small, but we have the orange circle that outlines that main shelter, or what might be known as the concessions shelter. And then we've got a little green circle down on the right side that outlines the Lions Shelter, not to be confused with Lions Park, which is not next to Swan Park. But it's the Lions Shelter, and that is going to be right next to where the splash pad and the new bathrooms are going to be. And so in order to make this a location where people can actually reserve it for birthday parties or other events, we would like to add these two shelters to our rentable shelter list and charge according to what we currently charge all the other shelters. We would, of course, make sure that any Swan Park tournaments or events that we currently have out there are already booked and take precedence. And then once there's those free weekends or days, then we'll open those up to the public. So the recommendation is to add both the Swan Park main shelter and the Lions Shelter to our list of rentable shelters and charge the same fee we charge for our other shelters. The fees are listed in the attachments.
All right.
Is there anything in there about reserving first for the, like, all the ball games and all the other things?
Well, it's in here, but I, I'm sure we'll, I'm sure we'll put it into our shelters, or we may have to wait on releasing that main Swan Park shelter until we have heard from baseball, we've heard from softball, and we've gotten everything reserved.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any other comments, questions? We'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Moved to approve.
Second. Motion by Hagan, second by Peterson, that council approves the addition of both Swan Park main shelter and the Lions Shelter at Swan Park, to be able to list them as rentable shelters and charge the same fee structure as we have with our other shelters. Any further discussion? Barbara Calderol?
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dmitri Martin?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right. Laura, thank you. Next up, we have consideration of an interim pay policy. Aaron?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Council members, page 69, you'll find a memo that outlines this. So we have a number of times, and especially lately, where we've had to ask lower-level positions to step up into higher-level positions because of a vacancy. That vacancy may be caused by retirement. It may be caused by a resignation, or a long-term illness, or a caregiver, or any of those scenarios. In the past, over, over years, when people have stepped up into these positions, they have been compensated something, but it's been an inconsistent amount. Sometimes it's been extra vacation, sometimes it's been a dollar an hour, sometimes it's been $2 an hour. Really, what we're looking to do is bring forward a policy that says, yeah, we do absolutely value and want to recognize that this person is doing extra work, and it's for the betterment of the organization. But we also want to standardize it and make it consistent, so people doing similar work are getting similar benefits for it. So in this draft policy, we would have people stepping up into, hold on a sec. Oh, my gosh, actually. Okay, my memo is inconsistent. I'm just reading. I'm glad I caught that. So look at the policy, not the memo. For any lower-ranking staff member serving in an interim capacity for a non-department head supervisor position, they'd be getting an extra $2 per hour during that interim time period. And any lower-ranking staff... And any lower ranking staff period serving in an interim capacity for a department head supervisor position, they'd be getting an extra $3 per hour during that interim period. You know, we, retirements, when we have payouts, sometimes we have to have a gap in employment to kind of recoup that money in our budgets. If you're wondering, you know, will this really severely negatively impact that? Because we've got to now extend it out in running the numbers. It is not likely to be more than one or two weeks longer because of this. And that's on a, you know, a five month vacancy. So department, the process would be, it would have to be approved by council. A department head would have to bring it forward as a request to say, this is the individual that we're putting, that we're suggesting gets put in this position for the interim. This is why. They'd follow the same promotion standards that's outlined in our employee handbook. And if that person does serve in an interim role and then goes on to be a candidate for, or taking that position full-time, the time that they served in the interim period would be counted towards their probationary period. So they wouldn't have to start that clock over. So I think it's a great opportunity for supervisors to take a look at that person in that position and, and see how they're performing. And it's also a great opportunity for that person to really find out if they like it. So that's kind of a summary of what we're proposing and why I'd be looking for a motion to approve if city council would entertain that.
Move to approve.
Motion by Martin?
Second.
Second by Olson, that we approve of this new interim pay policy. Any discussion? Barbara Calderol?
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut? Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thanks Aaron. Let's move on to the police union agreement then.
Yeah. Thank you council for that last approval. And Mayor Smith for the segue to this. So we have another memo on page 71 of your packet. If you remember when we went through the budget process, we were talking about a number of personnel changes. And during that, we did mention that we have communicated that with our police union. Our police union is still in the middle of a, of a contract that stretches through the end of 2023. Initially, when we presented it, there were some questions back and forth. It's taken a little while, but they ultimately did vote to approve a memorandum of understanding that would result in a lot of the same things that we talked about for non-rep employees. And just to recap what those are, that is a 3% cost of living increase for 2023. That would be effective immediately after this approval. That compares to a current 2% that their contract states. It also would be a vacation schedule that would replace their current schedule. And the vacation schedule would be what we just approved for all non-rep employees. Now, that vacation schedule, there's one minor tweak to it. And the, the vacation schedule that's in the current labor union agreement does have a couple of employees that in year two have 88 hours. They'd be grandfathered into that 88 hours and then, so they wouldn't lose eight hours from where they are now. And then as soon as they moved to year three, they would then be in the new schedule. So otherwise it's exactly the same. Longevity benefit would change from what's in the current union contract to what we also recently approved for all non-rep personnel. And then in turn for that, the WPPA has agreed to extend the current CBA from December 31st, 2023 to December 31st, 2024. So a one-year extension with a cost of living increase set at 2% in 2024. The memorandum of understanding also does have a, what we call a me too clause. So if non-reps were to get more than 2%, 2.5, the police union would, employees or the reps would also get 2.5. So from a city standpoint, we feel like this is a beneficial memorandum of understanding. And I, they obviously do as well, as they voted to ratify it, I believe, last week. Chief, any comments or anything?
Do you want to talk, or me to talk about the vacation?
Yeah, you can. Yeah.
Okay. Because there, there is going to be more vacation that they're going to get a little bit sooner. We looked at as to how that would affect the overtime. But most of the people, when they take vacation, they take it during the summertime. And we have our two PSLOs that come out of the school. So they're able to help absorb any of those overtime costs. The other thing is when they first got their contract back in, was it 2020, Aaron? Their original contract?
Yes, yes.
We did get something, or I asked for something to be in a contract that they put in for vacation as soon as they could. So the way it was, if somebody put in for vacation, a senior person could bump them two weeks out and that person would not get their vacation. But how it is now is if they put in for vacation, it's more than 45 days out. That person is guaranteed to have that vacation. So it's encouraged for the officers to put in for the vacation at the beginning of the year. If they know of trips planned, that assists us with scheduling so that we're able to schedule, because we do have a swing officer that is also able to cover vacations. And the other thing that does help is the vacation schedule will be going on the anniversary dates instead of the beginning of the year. So we don't have a bunch of people trying to use vacation at the end of the year. So we're hoping that the impact is going to be very minimal to our budget with the overtime.
Happy to, happy to answer any other questions. And if there's not, we'd be asking for consideration to approve the memorandum of understanding as seen in your packet.
Anybody have any questions, comments? I do want to thank the chief. He was very helpful in getting this memorandum of understanding through to the end. We actually gave up a little at the, at the beginning, but I think it's, it's a good deal for us and it's, it's a good deal for them too. So it's a, it's a win-win, quite honestly, here. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Chestnut?
Second.
Second by Olson, that we approve of the memorandum of understanding between the City of Opaque and the Opaque Professional Police Association. Any further discussion? Barbara Calderol?
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thanks Barbara.
Yep.
Thank you Aaron. All right. Next up, we have some purchases that are in the Public Works Department. Justin?
Thanks Mayor. Let's talk trucks. So the first one, page 99, is in our wastewater department. So replacing a truck there in the wastewater, we have two pickups. We call it truck 305 and 306. 305 was replaced back in 2018. 306, which is two pictures following the memo, shown, I guess, within. It is a 2008 Ford F-250. It supports our wastewater group for various items, including snow plowing. And then also, what you can't see in the picture is there's actually a bumper hoist. So in the back bumper, there's a small hoist that they use at lift stations when they need to lift out pumps or motors or anything that is deep within the ground. So this truck is up for replacement this year. We budgeted $85,000 to replace it. Now you're probably wondering, well, are you going to spend $85,000 on a pickup? No. What we want to do is replace the pickup, but then replace it with the utility box vehicle, which means it is a, a heavy duty truck, but it has a, basically on the back and the bed. If you, if, Aaron, if you could just scroll down, help me. This is the type of truck we're looking for. So it has all the toolboxes built in on the back. It's slightly more heavy duty. So to accommodate all the, the tools and parts and things that we need for our wastewater department. So as Jesse Landry, the facility, or excuse me, wastewater superintendent, started thinking about like, how do we do this? Of course, reached out to Roger and Jake in the street department to talk about vehicles, their availability, pricing, that sort of thing. And in the past, we've had some issues with procuring some vehicles. And so Jesse did his research, found out there was several of these types of trucks on a lot at Kunis Ford. And Kunis has the cooperative purchase agreement through the state, which our procurement policies or ordinance allows us to go directly to them and do. So what they did is take a visit straight down to Kunis and look at a number of trucks. There is a table just before these pictures, up please, comparing the, the three trucks that they thought were the most comparable or the best ones for us. So they looked at two Rams and one GMC. The furthest to the right was of the lowest price of the three at just under $64,000. It is four-wheel drive, so we're phasing out all the two-wheel drive trucks in our fleet and we're going with four-wheel drive so that we can respond in emergency situations. And also if this is going to be plowing snow, we need that as well. Being that it is new on the lot, it, it will have the warranty, standard warranty on it. If it needs warranty work, we can take it right to the dealership here in Talon Peterson, automotive right on Royton, and they can do, complete the warranty work for us for no charge. On top of that, I mean, it's very close to the GMC, but some of the things that the guys pointed out that gave it a slight edge, the dealership said they'd throw in running boards and a spray and bed liner at no cost. So getting a little bit of value there. But besides that, the truck itself, they felt it had a better utility box, better visibility, so we need to use it to plow. So we need to see where we're going, both forward and backwards. Better storage, a manual shift case, transfer case, excuse me. So that's four-wheel drive. So most standard is just push button. Well, the guys don't want that luxury. They want things that work. So the electronic push button is just one more thing to, to potentially fail. So they like that better. Darker interior, which means it hides stains. Wastewater department, that's definitely a concern. We like to keep things clean and we look for the resale value down the road. More auxiliary switches, which means we can add more things onto it. So what we will do with this truck, if you want to scroll back down to the white shiny truck, we will throw our standard orange decal on it, or stripe, excuse me, and then our city decal. And then we will add a couple extra orange flashing lights, most likely on top and back. So the, what I'm looking for tonight is the approval to purchase this Ram truck as listed and I've been talking about. The add-ons, like I've mentioned, the decals and some of the extras are going to add up and be roughly $20,000 more. And the majority of that is going to be the hoist. So which you think the hoist will be about $15,000, which would take additional approval from council. So I'll be most likely coming back for approval to purchase that part of the, I guess, equipment to put on the truck. But decal and lights should just be a couple thousand at most. So with that, I think all the information is in there. And again, looking for approval to purchase this Ram from Kunis with funding to come out of the sewer utility revenue bonds. Oh, and of course, the, that the bill of sale is at the end for your information. And I forgot to mention that, yes, there is, the municipal discount was applied. So the retail price was just under $73,000 with a discount of about $9,500. Gets us down to almost $64,000.
Thanks Justin. You, give me just one second. I'll call on you Dimitri. I, I just want to make sure I have this right. So, I mean, the sticker says $63,716, but you talked about some other additions to that.
Right.
So how much are you really looking for?
Well, roughly I have $20,000.
So you're actually looking for $83,000 or $85,000?
Right. We budgeted 83, a conservative estimate for the add-ons, I'm saying $20,000.
Okay. Now that doesn't include that, that lift that you were talking about?
It does include that.
Okay. So, and, and you want to get approval later for that?
Uh, not that I want to, but I think that's my job.
So now I'm just talking about the truck and the stickers and the lights and stuff like that?
Okay. $5,000 conservative.
Okay. So we're, we're looking at about $69,000?
Correct.
All right. So you're looking at an amount not to exceed $69,000?
If that's what you want to change it to, fine with that.
Does it make sense?
Does to me.
Okay. All right. Okay. Dimitri, go ahead.
Would we be potentially able to trade in our existing truck toward this purchase?
No, we're not going to trade it in. What we've been doing is either putting on Wisconsin surplus. We've been getting a very good return on those. And that goes, since this is sewer, it goes back to the sewer fund. And that's pretty much the only option here with this one.
With the sewer?
With the sewer.
With the sewer department.
Yes.
So we are working through that process, quite honestly Dimitri, on how we handle the, and this would be more for the general fund, but in, even in the sewer fund, about what we do on trade-ins or when we sell those assets, does that mean that we don't have to borrow as much money when we do that? Or are we building up the capital fund for the future? So we're, we're having all that discussion and hopefully we'll have that ready to talk to council, you know, at least before, maybe during the audit, which would be in April or even before that a little bit. But we are working on that process. So I see where you're going.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Anybody else? All right. Go ahead Paul.
I know we're not voting on this Justin, but is there a reason that you can't use the old hoist, old hoist from the old truck on the new truck?
Uh, well, it's a different type of truck. So we're going from more of a standard pickup to this utility box. And the bumper that's there, let me see if I can see a picture of it. It could not be swapped out. Cause it's, the hoist that's in the old truck is built in. It's a special bumper. It's built into the bumper and it could not be swapped out to this truck.
Although that will give us more value in selling that.
Yes.
Colin, you had a question?
Justin, you mentioned the truck was used for plowing, but you didn't mention if you're going to buy a plow with it or transfer the one that you have to it?
Yeah, we're, we're thinking of keeping the plow that we have and then transferring it over. And I should have clarified, it's, it's plowing around lift stations and the treatment plant, not city streets.
Right. I, I kind of got that, but I, I just wanted, you hadn't talked about it. So I want to be clear that you were going to pull this one off.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So anything else? We're looking for a motion to approve the purchases, this vehicle with some additional accessories and an amount not to exceed $69,000. Do you want to make that motion?
So move.
Motion by Chestnut?
Second.
Second by Hagan. Any discussion? Barbara Calderol?
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Is this next one the mayor's truck that's coming up, this white one? All right. Go ahead Justin. Keep going.
Next memo, starting on page 111, is another truck, this time in the street department. This specific truck, we are looking to replace truck 112, which is the truck that is primarily used by Street Superintendent Roger Hanson. used by Street Superintendent Roger Hanson. It is a quad cab pickup. Again, it's a 2008 Ford F-250. It is our, the only quad cab we have in our fleet, and I think in the city for that matter. But regardless, it's, it has its uses, not only supporting Roger for his duties, basically responding 24/7, but also in times where we need to transport a few more extra guys to jobs or to trainings outside of town. It has been used by a couple of other groups just because they need an, an extra seat or two. This truck that we're looking to replace, again, is two-wheel drive, has 102,000 miles on it, and is scheduled for replacement this year, of course, and that's why it's, it's on our capital to replace. We'd like to keep using this quad cab for all those reasons, as it does have its uses. And obviously, it does support Roger, who responds to almost everything. So we budgeted $90,000 to replace two trucks in the street department. However, you know, the recent increases in vehicles, the industry has kind of made it difficult to do that. And the way, where this number landed, we can for surely procure one. And if we're going to just get one, this would be the one that we're going to select over the others. The next memo will deal with the rest of the borrow, which I'll talk about in a minute. And like I mentioned before, the industry and availability has become an issue. And what Roger did is he visited both the local dealers, both Neville and Peterson, and talked to them directly of what stock is out there, what can you do, what can you find for me? And basically, only one truck was found that we thought fit with, for our needs, and it was a quad cab that Neville had found across the state. They could get that truck, which is shown there again in all white, with a dealer trade. It did get rebate. It's not shown further down on the purchase contract like it is on the other one. However, the retail price is $55,700, given us, and then a discount. It's kind of in the middle there, sandwiched at $4,700, applying basically the factory discount for municipal. So basically, what we're looking at is buying this vehicle for a street department, and we do have some more add-ons, again, Mayor, with the stripe, the decal, and some more lights. So what we're do, what I was asking for is just this flat-out approval for the purchase of the truck, and then those minor add-ons, we just take care of because the dollar value is so low. However, if you want to do the same thing, I'm all ears. And so outside of that, I guess I'm assuming the final purchase price is $54,000. So once you minus that off, the 90 we borrowed, we'll have at least $36,000 left, which will apply to the next item. So this is going to come out of the general obligation bonds.
Okay. Thanks, Justin. So you, you heard the sticker is $51,298. There's a few add-ons, so he's, it, it brings it up to $54,000. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve the purchase of this vehicle at an amount not to exceed $54,000. Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll move.
Motion? Motion by Peterson, second by Chestnut, that we approve the purchase of a 2023 Chevy Silverado 2500 quad cab from Neville Motors Incorporated. An amount not to exceed $54,000.
No.
Using our general obligation bond, bonds. Is that 2022, or is that to be borrowed?
2023.
Twenty, okay. So these would be, come out of our 2023 deal bond borrow. All right. Any discussion? Barbara Colerole?
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right. Another purchase we have, Justin, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Starting on 117, yeah, again, some more equipment purchase. So like I mentioned, we wanted to replace two trucks. We were only to, we were only able to purchase the one, which you just approved. With the remaining funds, we decided to shift our focus on, on a different piece of equipment, which is basically our sidewalk grinder or a pavement grinder. So in our street department, we do have a grinding unit. Picture of the existing unit is shown after the, the memo. It's a pretty old bugger from like 1996. We do quite a bit with it. We shave down lips and heaved sidewalks mostly to just get rid of like tripping hazards. We also can use it out in parking lots to help with drainage. It's used, used in the back parking lot here or anywhere else. In the springtime, when things heave, we use that to shave that down as well. So main thing is to reduce slip trips and falls on sidewalks, and then any part, we want to try and shave down a bump in the roadway. Because this thing is so long in the tooth, it has its limits. And Roger, being as savvy as he, as he is, found this demo unit when he was out and about at a trade show and was basically able to talk a guy into selling it to us. It has roughly like two or three hours of actual use on it, so it's basically new. The rebate that we're getting for it, there is a rebate that's applied to it, which is, I should have had that ready. I'm sorry. The rebate is, I believe, like $2,500 for this unit. And sorry for the, the file size on the photos. Those are giant. Well, the invoice is lower. The invoice, now that we're looking at it, shows the price of the grinder, does not show the rebate, but these things new are just shy of $10,000. We're getting this one for $7,400. There is a cutting head that is also sold with these machines, and this is, that's why that picture is in there, because we're opting to go with basically a better cutting head than standard. This head basically totes like a 1 million mile life and high efficiency. And actually, Roger used this machine and was really impressed. So what we're looking to do is buy the machine, buy this cutting head. There's a couple extra, extra add-ons there that we're electing not to, to do, which I redlined out. Those are basically like a dust control add-on. Right now, we feel we can get by without that, as we have ability to attach a hose to it, use a different water source. And then, of course, the guys always use your PPE. Down the road, if it becomes an issue, we can also, we can look into that. But for now, we don't want those add-ons. If you could scroll up again, then, Aaron. So that's the fancy cutting head. Looks really nice. It's like a carbon diamond tip thing, so it's going to last forever. The actual unit is above that. And so in the past, what I didn't mention is, so the machine that we have is somewhat limited because of the age and what it's able to do. There's been times we've had to contract out the county to help us out on some of our roads and our bridges. This machine, if we get that, would replace that. So basically, we'll be able to do more with it. So instead of just doing a few hundred feet a year, we could expect to do much more, and we can do our own work instead of hiring out the county. So we think this is a good alternative. Instead of getting another pickup, we like to get this. It has a big benefit to the city and all the residents. We reduce all those trips and tripping points. That reduces our liability. We get rid of a few more bumps in the road. That reduces a few complaints. So looking for your approval to, instead of buying a pickup truck, let's buy this grinding unit. That unit plus the head that I'm looking for, the total of $20,660.55. Like I mentioned with the previous truck purchase, with the borrow, we had, you're noted for the two pickups, we had $36,000 left now. So it fits within that. So between pickup truck and this grinder, we'll still have a little bit left over, which we'll probably just leave alone.
Okay. So the, the amount is what the invoice says?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So you've heard the discussion. Any questions?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I, I noticed the quotation's only good for seven days, which, me, Paul, or the other Paul?
You, of course, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I noticed the quotation's only good for seven days. Have you checked to make sure that these numbers are going, they're going to be honored?
Yes. Yep, yep. Roger has looked into that, and while the quote says that, the guy has promised Roger that it is good till we get approval.
All right.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Martin.
Second.
Dijkstra.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dijkstra. I'm sorry, Colin. That we approve this purchase at an amount not to exceed $20,660.55. Any discussion? Further discussion? Barbara Colerole?
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thanks, Justin. We have an appointment to the Parks and Rec. I'll turn that over to our council president, Paul Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor would like to appoint Kristen Dolcher to the Parks and Recreation Board. During the mayor's appointment, I need a motion and a second to approve.
I move to second.
Moved by Dijkstra, second by Martin, to approve the appointment of Kristen Dolcher to the Parks and Recreation Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say no.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to you, Mayor.
All right. Thanks, Paul. Next up, license report. This is the operator's or bartender's license, number 1609. There's two names on there. We're looking for a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Chestnut.
Second.
Second by Peterson, that we approve of this license report. Discussion. All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried, 1610. There's two people that want to drive taxi. So this would be license report number 1610. We're looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Olson.
Second.
Second by Martin, that we approve license report 1610. Discussion. All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We need to license a couple of these taxis. So that's license report number 1611. We're looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Peterson, that we approve license report number 1611. Discussion. All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. As Barb reported earlier, we do have, we do have an election on February 21st of this month. You know, that's the prime, or the primary election. Normally, and our ordinance actually says this too, that we move council meeting to the Wednesday after the city council meeting. We have, we have some people that have some conflict already, so we are hoping with, with enough advance notice to you that we could move that to Monday, February 20th, instead of Wednesday, the, the 22nd. So if you're okay with that, since it is in ordinance form, we would be looking for a motion to approve that change to our next city council meeting being held on Monday, February 20th. What's that?
Next month.
Uh, next month. It would be the second.
Yeah.
Of the month. Second one of February. I'm sorry. Did I say that wrong?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Second of February.
All right. I don't know what month it is. Saturday?
I'll move to change the date.
Good. Motion by Peterson.
Second.
Second by Olson.
Yep.
That we approve of changing our February 21st city council meeting to Monday, February 20th, due to the spring primary election being held on that, on that Tuesday. Discussion. Make sure you mark your calendars for that. All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. And then, this is just FYI, just to let you know, of course, that the first meeting in April, there's always an election on that first Tuesday, so your council meeting will be the next day, which will be the April 5th. So just FYI on that. Nothing under number 10 discussion or items there, at least this one. Communications and recommendations of the mayor. I, I don't have anything, but I do want Aaron just to talk about something that's happening next week and see if we have any interest.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Next Tuesday, there's the Chamber of Commerce Award Banquet. We do have a city table. If any council members are interested in joining, we have some staff members going. It is at 5:15 is when it starts, and it's at the old Sears Building in between the old Kmart and Pickle Wiggly. So please get ahold of me if you want, and if you can get ahold of me within the next day, that'd be fantastic, so we can give the chamber a heads up. So check your schedules. We'd love to have you join.
Thanks, Aaron. Anybody else have anything for the, go to the meeting tonight? All right, we're looking, uh, next meeting is February 7th, so we'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Olson, that we adjourn until our next regular scheduled meeting. All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. We're adjourned at 7:48 PM. Have a great night. Everybody drive safe.